It is six o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, June 6, 2024, meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I have asked Commissioner Fendig to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Rofolsky to lead us in our pledge. If you would stand with me, please.
Well, thank you very much for the privilege. Let's lift our hearts and minds to our Father God and Lord Jesus. We pray to you. We pray to all of heaven. There appears to be a lot of turmoil and concern in our country, within our cities, within our governments. Israel being attacked, then it's a division between the Arabs and Israelis, in Ukraine and Russia, in all of Europe, in China and Taiwan. Probably never before since World War II has our world been so poised to make the wrong choices. You command that we pray for our leaders, and we pray for the leaders of our country and all the other countries. And we ask that you bring peace upon the earth and not the sword and protect us all. Thank you for our local government, for our local citizens, and the unity that we have here in Jesus' name.
He's joined me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with never being justice for all.
This evening, before we begin our meeting, I would like to just take a few minutes to reflect on the significance of the day, June 6th. This year marks the 80th anniversary of D-Day, when roughly 160,000 allied troops landed in occupied France on June 6, 1944, and executed the largest air, land, and sea invasion in history amid daunting obstacles, terrible bloodshed, and stakes that could not have been higher. By days end, the Allies had suffered an estimated 10,000 men killed, wounded, or missing in action: 6,603 Americans, 2,700 British, and 946 Canadians. Allied powers had prevailed across Normandy's beachhead, and their foothold would grow stronger in the following days and weeks, paving the way for victory in Europe. This is considered the day that the tide of World War II turned. I would like to read an excerpt from General Dwight D. Eisenhower's Order of the Day. Soldiers, sailors, and airmen of the Allied Expeditionary Force, you are about to embark upon the great crusade toward which we have striven these many months. The eyes of the world are upon you. The hope and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere march with you. I have full confidence in your courage, devotion to your duty, and skills in your attitude. We will accept nothing less than full victory. Good luck, and let us beseech the blessings of Almighty God upon this great and noble undertaking. Those words are powerful, and the images of that day are powerful. I want us to remember those who sacrificed for us, for our country, and for our world. I also want to recognize any veterans that are in the room this evening. Would you stand, please? Thank you for your service. And do we have any family of anyone that was lost on D-Day? Is there anyone in the room that had fathers, brothers, mothers that were lost on that day? We just want to remember them today, and in remembrance of that, I've asked General, retired General John Gentry, our Assistant County Manager, if he would say a prayer for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a former commander at First and 118 Field Artillery out of Savannah, which actually crossed Omaha Beach as part of its lineage on D-plus-three, it's an honor to be able to give a word of prayer to our fallen and for those that served during that time. So, thank you.
And could we stand one more time, please?
Father, we do come to you to this day, and we do praise you for that great generation that came before us, dear Lord, that willingly fought on foreign soil, dear Lord, to really eradicate evil in that continent, dear Lord, and to clear that continent and the country of France and others of a very fascist government that was, that came about. We pray, dear Lord, for the men and women that supported the fight, for the men that gave their lives, and the women that served in various roles throughout our country and also forward in Europe, dear Lord. We just, we just praise you for them, and we thank you for their service and their time, their commitment. We thank you for those Gold Star families, dear Lord, for, as we watched those ceremonies this morning at Normandy and all of the crosses of the cemeteries that are there on that continent, dear Lord, and there at Normandy itself and many other areas throughout Europe, dear Lord. We just, we just think of the thousands and thousands of lives that were lost just for freedom, dear Lord. Not only our freedom, but the freedom of those who were oppressed because of that Nazi regime. We just thank you. We lift them up, their families. We praise you for these 80th celebration of that great event in eradication of evil. And we just commit this day, we commit those men and women to you. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. This evening, we have the privilege of issuing a proclamation for designating the Fourth Saturday in June as General W. Martin Picnic Day, whereas the Glen County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize and acknowledge the legacy of General W. Martin and others in establishing and hosting an annual community picnic event at Selden Park, whereas this event was established as a countywide outreach effort that was coordinated and hosted by Glen County's faith-based and spiritual leaders, whereas the event has had a significant impact on the young men and women that attended over the years, whereas those young men and women have gone on to become leaders in their respective communities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Glen County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and acknowledges the legacy of General W. Martin and others in establishing and hosting an annual community picnic event at Selden Park, and be it further proclaimed that the Fourth Saturday of June is hereby designated as General W. Martin Picnic Day. In witness thereof, I set my hand this day. And we have with us Pastor Troy Moody. If you would come forward, sir, and receive this, and it's the daughter here this evening. Okay. All right. And if the entire committee would come forward.
We'll give you a moment at the mic. But this is the proclamation. I think we need to take a picture. Close him up. All right. Thank you. All right. This is the proclamation. If you'd like, have a word.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Amen. We like to be mindful of our leadership of those who've gone before us. When I was a young man in the city of Brunswick growing up, one of my favorite holidays of the summer was the Sunday School picnic. And many of us, Commissioner Booker, myself, Pastor Campbell, we would have been so impressed on this Sunday School picnic that we just had to bring it back, that we can get the churches back together and to fellowship and to be mindful of all the challenges that we're going through and where we are today. So, we just praise God for this proclamation from the Commission and just praise God that we will be able to sustain this for years to come. God bless you, and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent of general for general business with the exception of any item a Commissioner wishes to pull.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Clark. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. I think I probably need to take a moment to ask if Commissioner Swett was able to join us via Teams. Commissioner Swett is in continuing education courses this evening, today and tomorrow, so unable to be with us in person tonight. That moves us to item number 11 under public hearings. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position and the time allotted. Your corporation is greatly appreciated. This is a little bit different of a public hearing. We are reviewing our budget, and we will allow time for questions and comments after Ms. Munson gives her presentation.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. This is the public hearing for the proposed FY 2025 budget. This budget was released on our website on May 27 and has been available for review. And we have been working on this budget since around November of last year to come up with a balanced budget where revenues balance to our expenditures and to work to meet all the needs of the county departments, the courts, the elected officials, the capital needs throughout the county that we can afford this year. As y'all know, there's a lot more needs than we have money for, but we've done our best to provide a balanced budget to you, and the budget is balanced. This is out on our website, and if, I just wanted to show you the different sections. It's a little hard to see here, but there's a homepage with a kind of a summary letter, a budget overview, which provides all of the changes and summary of the budget in total and what the different funds are for and what those monies are used for. Then the proposed budget itself has all the numbers in there, and then finally, there is a five-year capital plan for all of the proposed capital for this year plus some items for the next four years. So, I'm available to answer any questions that you have and happy to be here tonight to present this to you. I'm glad we're finally here.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Munson. Commissioners, before we open the public hearings, are there any questions or discussions? And Ms. Munson, you did mention that we had had these discussions in small groups and worked through the budget. So, the Commissioners are somewhat familiar with the budget numbers before receiving them here this evening. Any questions, Commissioners? This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to come and speak about the budget, please come forward and state your name for the record. Anyone that has a question or comment about the budget. This is going to be a short public hearing. All right, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we're back to you, Commissioners.
So, there's no vote needed for tonight. This will be adopted at the next meeting. So, tonight was just the opportunity for public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Munson.
Mr. Chairman, will you just kind of restate where people can find this information and where it's available and any other hearings that are available for them to go to?
So, I don't think it's going to let me back out, but if you go to the Glen County homepage, it's on the very first page, there's a block about halfway down that says Proposed FY 25 Budget. That will be out there until the budget is adopted at the next meeting. After that, you can go to the finance page, and you can see multiple years of budgets that stay there permanently.
I want to thank you so much for all the work you and your staff have done and to put it all together. People do not understand how much time and effort it takes to put an accurate and agreeable budget together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we all echo.
I wanted to second that, sir. I know how hard you and your staff work on that. Thank you.
And also, you know, the county manager and the department heads and all of you working with us to get the capital projects that we need out there. So, it's definitely a group effort, and it does take quite a bit of time. We say we do six months of budget and six months of audit every year, so we just kind of stay busy all year long, but glad to finally have a balanced budget for proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Munson.
Thanks.
All right. Item number 12 this evening is to consider appointing two citizens to serve on the Marshals of Glen Library Board, representing two at-large posts. The terms will begin July 1, 2024, and end July, I mean, June 30, 2027. And we have three applicants, Jennifer Floyd, Tashania Gardner, and Valerie Whitehead. We can accept two of these three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a nomination for Jennifer Floyd and Tanisha Gardner for the item listed, number 12.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Clark, a second by Commissioner Tosterson for Ms. Floyd and Ms. Gardner. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 13 is Consider One Citizen to Serve the Marshals of Glen Library Board, representing an at-large post. The terms begin immediately and end June 30, 2025. We have the same three applicants. Two of them have been appointed to four-year terms, so that leaves Valerie Whitehead.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Valerie Whitehead for consideration appointment to one citizen for the Marshals of Glen Library Board, representing the at-large post.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Clark, a second by Commissioner Tosterson for Valerie Whitehead. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Under General Business, item number 14, Consider Adopting a Resolution for the Glen County Board of Commissioners to Sell Certain Properties, County Properties at Auction. And we have with us Tax Commissioner Jeff Chapman this evening. Commissioner, do you want to make? Thank you for being with us.
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Thank you for that recognition of D-Day. That's become 80 years, and I just noticed it seemed to, I can remember when it was really a big thing on the newspaper, radio, and discussion of the day, and it's, you know, over time, things forget, but sacrifice without remembrance is meaningless, so thank you for that. And the Assistant County Attorney, Assistant County Manager's comments as well in prayer. I got my very capable deputy, Ms. Alice Everett, here with me. This is essentially phase three of the work we started with. We did a pilot first test and then moved forward to the, a lot of people refer to it, the Liberty Harbor Sale. That was about 90 lots, thereabouts, which was phase two. That was successful. And this is the third phase of that. We think it'll be the last part of it, the county-owned delinquent tax properties. In the, in your package is a list of them. Some of them have paid, some of them have kind of gotten cleaned up. We're down to about 210, and there'll be a few more pulled for reasons that has found to be an error, like I think there was one of them, and it was an actual county property and things like that. So, we, we watch it real close and monitor it, but tonight, we're asking you to approve this resolution similar to all the others, allowing us to go forward and sell these to the high bidder and then distribute the taxes, just like the resolution says, and any overage that's collected goes to Glen County. So, that's what we're asking on this particular resolution.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Chapman.
I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has one.
Sure. Any Commissioners, we're back to you. Any questions? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution of the Glen County Board of Commissioners to Sell Certain Property, Certain County Property Interest at Auction.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 15 is To Consider Amendment to Article 1 of Chapter 2-14 of the Code of Ordinances, Glen County, Georgia, to Add a Section 2-14-2 to be titled County Purchase of Tax Deeds, to Establish a Procedure for the County to Purchase Deeds at a Tax Sale and for Other Purposes. And again, Commissioner Chapman.
Yes, sir. This is just what I consider a housekeeping type thing here. Now, when they said that at the General Assembly, everybody paid attention and knew to be careful. But when I say housekeeping, in the past, tax commissioners, and it's in the code, they would knock off a property, and literally says that word, knock off the property to the county, so the county becomes owner. And that's, that's just not a good idea, and fortunately for Glen County citizens, the county attorney's office, this commission, you know, y'all wanted to dress that, clean it up, and so we've done that. This ordinance, the attorney's office helped us write, it would allow, it would require the county commission to vote and approve accepting any properties that can't be sold at a delinquent tax sale. That way, you know, you fix the problem, and then down the road, future tax commissioners won't arbitrarily just make the same mistake again. So, this, I think, is a good policy to have in place, and it will prevent, you know, like I said, once this property is cleaned up, it will prevent this from happening, and there may be a reason you won't to accept it, but you would, you would know it, you'd be fully informed, and do it in an official capacity. That's all this really does.
All right. Thank you, sir. And we had been briefed on this as well. Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt an amendment to Article 1 of Chapter 2-14 of the Code of Ordinances, Glen County, Georgia, to Add Section 2-4-2-14-2 to the titled County Purchase of Tax Deeds, to Establish a Procedure for the County to Purchase Deeds at Tax Sale and for Other Purposes.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 16 is Consider Adoption of the Proposed GB-911 Tiered Pay and Incentive Plan with the Effective Date of June 30, 2024. The Proposed Pay and Incentive Plan were developed to address the existing retention issues. And Ms. Richardson couldn't be here tonight, so Ms. Munson is here to speak on this.
All right. So, this pay plan has been developed over the last six months or so with coordination between Chief Ebner, Director Kara Richardson of the 911 Center, and myself. It's been vetted by the Joint Public Safety Communication Dispatch Board, JPSCD. I don't know exactly what it stands for, but it's, it's all the groups that work to support the 911 Center. They've all reviewed this in detail and are supportive of it. On the screen is a summary of the approximate cost to each entity that supports this. This will change slightly because we're going to be adding an entity soon, and so these numbers will go down just a bit, but it won't make a huge difference. So, this is a good estimate here of the cost of that plan. It was presented in full at the May 21 work session, so if anyone has a lot of questions, they can go back and review that live stream, and I am here to do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Commissioners, while we did review this at work session, is there any questions, any follow-up?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I just want to thank Tamara and basically all the law enforcement and fire and EMTs, what we've done this year to bring them up to the level where we can get some, we have exceptional people to bring even more to this community, and I thank each one that participated in this this year.
All right. Any other comments? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the Proposed GB-911 Tiered Pay and Incentive Plan with an Effective Date of June 30, 2024. The Proposed Pay Plan and Incentive Plan were developed to address the existing retention issues.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Rofolsky, a second by Commissioner Clark. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. I would like to take just a moment to welcome Sheriff Jump this evening. I see you're back row Baptist this evening, so, but we're glad to have you here with us, Our public comment period, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Laura Carana. If you want to come forward, please, you will have five minutes. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Laura Carana. I live in downtown Brunswick, and I'm currently running as an independent candidate for County Commissioner at-large post two, the seat currently held by Mr. Rofolsky. As you know, for several years, I've been a vocal advocate for local government practices and policies that demonstrate transparency, accountability, and accessibility to the public. Tonight, my comments are going to focus on that last one, accessibility. What I mean by accessibility is how easy is it for citizens of Glen County to get information about what the Board of Commissioners is doing and the decisions that you're making? How easy is it for the average citizen to easily understand that information? And how easy is it for citizens to communicate directly with you, the Commissioners, either in private or in the public space? I have two very simple recommendations for the Board of Commissioners to improve accessibility. The first one may not be immediately obvious to you, but is very obvious to anyone sitting in the public gallery tonight, and that is, we can't see the bottom half of your faces right now. The computer screens in front of you block your lower faces and sometimes your whole face if you're looking down, and from the perspective of anyone sitting back here, you look like this. I sent you an email earlier today with a photo showing this perspective so that you can see what we see, and that photo is pretty representative of what we see most of the time, even when you're making eye contact and engaged with a speaker, it looks like this. This makes it very difficult to tell which one of you is speaking anytime there's a discussion happening or if you are asking a question to someone making a presentation. When we can't see whose mouth is moving and the average citizen has difficulty following the conversation, that negatively impacts accessibility. So, my first recommendation and request is that you figure out a way to remove or lower the computer screens that are blocking your faces so that anyone attending your public meetings in person can easily follow what's going on. This would be an easy fix, and it would have a big impact. My second recommendation and request is that you move the public comment period back to the to the beginning of your meeting agenda. As you know, it used to be this way, and then on January fifth, twenty twenty-three, you moved the public comment period to the end of the agenda. I was curious about whether this change has impacted participation in the public comment period, and so I did my research. I looked up the meeting minutes for all the commission meetings since that policy change to see how many people spoke during the public comment period, and that was thirty-one total meetings from then until now. And then I looked up the minutes for the thirty-one meetings immediately before the policy was changed to have something to compare that to. And what I found was that before the policy change, there was an average of one point three public comments per meeting. After the policy change, that dropped to an average of zero point five comments per meeting. That's a decrease of sixty percent. The number of public comments after the policy change, when the comment period was at the end, at the end of the agenda, are less than half of the number of public comments before the policy change. There are no other factors to explain this large drop in public participation after this date. We didn't have another pandemic on that date, and people didn't suddenly have less to say to you on that date. The only difference is that you made it more inconvenient for the average citizen of Glen County to participate in the public comment period. You made the public comment period less accessible to the public. I understand that your rationale for this policy change is that applicants who are here for public hearings on zoning changes and other agenda items, who have hired lawyers, engineers, or other consultants to attend these meetings with them and are paying them hourly fees, this policy change was intended to save them a little bit of money on those consultant fees. And with all due respect, I don't accept that explanation. Public comments are limited to three people per meeting, five minutes each. So, we're talking about a maximum of fifteen minutes of billable time before the public hearings on the agenda. And of course, we didn't have three speakers at every meeting. The data shows that there were an average of one point three speakers per meeting. So, in reality, the public comment period was adding an average of six point five minutes to the beginning of the agenda. The other reason I don't accept this explanation is that some agenda items remain at the beginning of the agenda now, like commission presentations and announcements that we had today. These regularly add five or ten minutes to the beginning of each meeting, about the same amount of time as public comments. And it's understood that to be respectful of the general public's time, who may be there only for those special announcements, they go first, and then the rest of the agenda follows. If you were really concerned with folks saving money on their attorney fees, you would have moved your own presentations and announcements to the end of the agenda, but you haven't. I think the real reason you moved the public comment period to the end is that you're not interested in hearing what your constituents have to say, but you're required to by law, so you moved it to the end of the agenda. But regardless of your motivation or your rationale for making this change, you now know the impact of this change.
Ms. Carana, that's five and a half minutes.
Okay. I'll wrap up real quick. You're hearing less from your constituents because of this change, and when we know better, we should do better. So, I ask you to please reverse this policy and, so that you can do your job better and hear from us more. Thank you.
Our second speaker is Angie Jeter. Is Mr. Jeter here this evening? All right. I do not see her, so that would complete our regular agenda items. We do have need for executive session, Mr. Attorney, for the purpose of...
Property matters and potential litigation.
All right. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into executive session for property matters and pending litigation.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to go into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand reassessed. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Clark to come out of executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve minutes of previous meeting. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve staff's recommendation regarding property acquisition.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve staff's recommendation on property acquisition. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, final. I move to approve the county attorney's recommendation regarding potential litigation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Clark to approve the attorney's recommendation on potential litigation. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by everyone attending. All in favor, please raise your right hand. We stand adjourned.